Good evening, it's seven o'clock, we'll get started. I'd like everyone to know that item fourteen, which is four zero zero seven overlay, has been removed from the agenda, will not be heard tonight. And if anyone didn't see the notice, we've rescheduled item nineteen, which is seven two zero zero telegraph. Item nineteen won't be heard, that's going to be heard on September thirtieth at seven P. M. So if anyone's here for that item, we won't be taking it up. All right, so with that, let's stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So let's take attendance.
So noted.
And then I'll need a motion to approve or amend the minutes of August twelfth, twenty twenty-five.
I would move to approve the minutes of August twelfth, twenty twenty-five as amended.
Support.
I have a motion in support, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. So as a brief introduction, the zoning board of appeals is a seven-member quasi-judicial body appointed by the Bloomfield Township Board of Trustees for the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. Matters pending before the zoning board of appeals are decided on a case-by-case basis. Any appeal of a decision made by the zoning board of appeals is subject to circuit court review. Each case will be called separately in the order shown on tonight's agenda. There will be an opportunity for public comment at one point during each case. All persons wishing to comment will be asked to provide their name and address at the podium. Address your comments to the board and not the applicant or other members of the public. Given the numbers of appeals tonight, please make your comments brief. Comments by the neighborhood association will be considered as part of the factual information presented to the board, but those comments are not the determining factor for approval or denial. Please confine comments to the specific request before the board. For requests to be successful, an affirmative vote of at least four members present is required. We hope this provides a better understanding of what you can expect at tonight's meeting. And with that, let's call the first item, three three five Waddington Drive. Is the applicant ready?
Yes. Good evening, Brian Ritter, BMR Design, sixty-eight hundred Franklin Road, Bloomfield Township, Michigan. I am speaking, excuse me, on behalf of the homeowner, Michael Wendt, at three three five Waddington. Our proposal is a permission request for the installation of a hot tub and a grill station on a patio at grade level. And I guess we're just seeking permission with regard, we're well inside the lines as far as the setback lines and everything else. We've conferred and received permission through the village with our application. We just did, we had a minor change, which I know Kathy is here, and just talked to her about it a little bit. Our original proposal showed the grill station being out from the home. And the homeowner has, if you can take a look where we're proposing it, there's a large tree that's there. What we're looking to do is just move it directly opposite of its existing location, but next to the house. So it's less visible.
The zoning board actually does not need to approve that, that's actually permitted because it's on a patio.
Okay.
So thank you, so just want to make that clarification.
So we're there. It's just the hot tub?
Yeah.
Oh, well, okay. So we have the hot tub, so we're looking for permission for the hot tub.
Any questions from the board? So we'll open this to public comment, if anyone would like to speak on this item.
Good evening, Kathy Weisenborn, representing Bloomfield Village Association, thirty-five ninety-five Bradway in Bloomfield. We did review this request, it does meet all our requirements. We did ask the applicant to add some additional screening along the left lot line to make sure that that's fully screened. There are some mature evergreens along that lot line, but you know how they get a little bit sparse at the bottom. So they, I think they've actually already put it in. So we're happy with this and we recommend approval, thank you.
So Kathy, is the screening that he's got shown up there, what?
We had some additional on the, what would be the south lot line.
Okay.
The area that's also, we did require that screening up on the rear lot line. That is deciduous trees now, and that is required to be evergreen.
Okay, so what about on the, it looks like on the north end there, is that screened by something else?
On the north side, there is, the north side would be the right lot line. There is actually.
I'm sorry, the left lot line then?
The left lot line, there is, there are mature evergreens there, I think they're pines, but they're a little sparse on the bottom. So we had them, they agreed to put some arbres below so that it's screened from that neighbor to the, to the south.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Does anyone else like to speak on this item? I'll close the public hearing and then bring it back to the applicant, so.
We've added this, we've already added the screening that the village had requested. I actually have a photograph, I don't know how to put it up, but we understand, and we've already had those green giant arbres.
So it has to be screened from public view?
Yeah, we've already done it.
All right. Any other questions from the board?
You don't have any, you're right.
Might as well get it out.
No, 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 it's okay.
We want to test all of his technical capabilities.
Okay, all right, so here's a test.
He's graded every semester, so.
Back lot, a couple of, there were a couple of arborvitae's that were already dead or damaged. And so you can see through, but what ended up happening is we switched it. So instead of five to six foot, my landscaper was able to get seven to eight foot arborvitae's, green giants. And so we ended up adding those in between all of the trees so that when they grow up, they'll fully screen everything.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Ready for a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
With regard to. Request be approved as submitted, based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all, demonstrate compliance with section forty-two dash seven point six standards because the use of the accessory structure is appropriate to the neighborhood as that this is within the variances or within the setbacks of this backyard and very common for the area. So if the motion is approved, it must include application for all necessary permits to be made within one year for the hot tub, additional evergreen plantings. I'm not going to require them at this point in time based on the drawings as submitted, as well as the documentation that Mr. Ritter has shown tonight.
Support.
Motion in support, any discussion? Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
You're welcome. Calling next item, item two, one five five Westwood. Is the applicant ready? One five five Westwood, item two. Anyone here for that item?
I'll move to table that to the end of the meeting.
Support. I have a motion.
Do you want to hear public comment?
Oh, all right, well, why don't we take a public comment? Let's open the public hearing on this one.
Thank you for letting me comment at this point.
It's our pleasure, given the number of times you've been here. You have an excellent track record.
Thank you. So this is a new house on a, the, I think the sole remaining vacant lot in the village. This is at the corner of Maple and Westwood. It is a very challenging lot, it's not very deep. The house will front on Westwood, and you can see the lot is not very deep. Our setbacks for this lot are thirty feet. A lot of the homes along Westwood have that thirty-foot setback. And in order really to build on this lot, you really can't build if it's more than, if the house was required to meet the forty-foot setback. We looked at this several times to come up with a design that is, we believe, harmonious with the neighborhood. The, we looked at the size of the home, I think it's a twenty-nine and a half foot height that'll look, will go very nicely on the, on the lot. There is a front porch that juts slightly out further than the thirty feet. We thought that that was a nice feature and added to the front of, the front elevation. So we felt like that was an appropriate addition, jetting out a bit more from the thirty-foot setback. All in all, we approve this and we would recommend approval of the, I think it's a seventeen-foot variance from the forty-foot required front setback. I'd be happy to address any questions.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you Kathy. Does anyone else would like to speak on this item? All right, so I'll close the public hearing.
And I'll move to table item number two to the end of the meeting.
Support.
So I have a motion to table in support, alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Table to the end of the meeting. So we'll call the next item, item three, three 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 Westborne. Is the applicant ready?
Thank you, excuse me, thank you for your time this evening. I am Raymond Dobring, the homeowner of three 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 Westborne Court. I'm seeking approval for an eight by eight foot, eight-foot-high shed located in the rear of, the rear yard behind my house, which is setback at least sixteen feet from all the lot lines. The shed will be used for storage, like lawnmower, snow blower, wheelbarrow, lawn and garden equipment. Evergreen, evergreen planting will be planted at the east side to screen the shed. And all the information has been provided and included in the packet, and I would be happy to answer any of the questions that the board may have.
Any questions in the board? I'll open the public hearing on this item, anyone like to speak on this item, item three? I'll close the public hearing and bring it back then to the board for discussion or a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Oh.
If you mind just discussing this.
Sure.
Okay.
So in his thing, it says he's going to plant four to five foot arborvitae's, the shed is over eight feet tall. So that doesn't meet our requirement. And then there's no screening to the rear in his application. If your motion included he has to do the screening, that's, but I want to make sure the applicant understands that that won't meet the expectations.
The doors that are opening to the shed is towards the north, which is on the top of that drawing. And so the she, the screening will be on the east side or the right-hand side. And we could get eight feet tall trees.
So the other problem is, your neighbor behind you can't see it. So I understand where the doors are, that makes sense, to be able to use it and getting that, especially with that equipment. But the neighbor can't see it. So whether you have screening right next to it or ten feet in front of it, the neighbor can't see it. So what can we do to address that, so that you can get your shed, but the neighbor doesn't see it? So screening has to be around it.
When you say the neighbor can't see it, where, at what point in his lot, would that be from his house?
Well, it has to be screened from public view, so.
Anywhere in his lot.
Anywhere on his.
Are there evergreens along your rear lot line?
Yes.
That go all the way to the ground?
Yes. Yeah, that, that shows the back lot.
That's the rear.
Okay.
Oh, I see.
That's fine.
You're good. Okay, well, I'll make a motion if there's no other questions. In regards to the appeal at three 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 Westborne Court for the accessory structure of a shed, I move that the request be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with section forty-two dash seven point six standards because the use of the accessory structure is appropriate for the, for the neighborhood as everyone's looking for additional storage, as well as the location of the structure will not hinder or discourage adjacent use of the property due to the fact that it will be screened. If approved, the motion also includes application for all necessary permits must be made within one year for the proposed accessory structure, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. Additional evergreen plantings will be required to screen the shed from public view, and plantings must meet or exceed the height of the shed at the time of installation for twelve months of the year.
Support.
I have a motion in support, any discussion? Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. So calling next item, item four, five eight nine five Burnham Row.
Good evening, thank you for your time. My name is Forkon Siddiqui, my wife here, Miriam. We are seeking an approval for a swimming spa in our backyard, which is approximately seventeen by five by eight in dimensions, like a larger hot tub, basically. It is at least twenty-five feet from the north, a neighbor on the north side, and about at least fifty feet from the neighbor on the back side. And the south side is, is way out, so it's, I don't know, a hundred feet maybe. We have arborvitae's on, existing arborvitae's which are about ten feet tall on, oh, yeah, you got those, thank you. Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, so we have ten-foot arborvitae's in L shape right immediately next to the structure. And we have mature plantation all around the, on the perimeter of the lot. As you can see, is there a pointer?
There's a pointer.
Okay, that's fine. What you see is basically where the, on the left side of the screen where you see a little pit, this is like a little planter. And next to the second row of the plants is another row of arborvitae's, which is about ten feet as well. And the lot on all three sides, U shape, are all mature trees. If you can see by the trampoline, there's the backside of the lot, which is basically screening, providing the screen to the back neighbors. It's, is going to be on the existing paper patio, which already has a thick six-inch crushed concrete base installed at the time of construction with this in mind.
Any questions from the board?
I have one question, going back to the picture before. Is it going, I see that there's a white square, but isn't it going on the other patio, the other side of the patio?
It's going where you see the, like, little, like a half circle or quarter of a circle?
Okay.
That's where the mature tree is? And you know, next to it is like two planters and a tanning table, this is an aerial view, it's very high.
Yeah, that's what I thought, I just was wondering what.
Playing with my drone, but.
What was it?
All right.
Okay.
Any other questions on the board? Open this to the public, anyone like to speak on this item? So I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for discussion or motion. Great, thank you.
In regards to the appeal at five eight nine five Burnham for the accessory structure, will the request be approved and submitted? Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with section forty-two dash seven point six standards because the location of the accessory structure is in the rear of the property, it's with, it's outside the setbacks of the property, and it'll, it'll be fully screened on the property line and, as well as adjacent to. And if, if approved, the motion must include application for all necessary permits, must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. If there are any openings, additional evergreen plantings will be required to screen the swimming spa from public view and meet or exceed the height of the spa at the time of planting.
Support.
I have a motion in support, any discussion? Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
Calling next item, item five, eight seventy Bloomcrest.
Good evening, Keith Stidzinski, I'm the homeowner. Thank you for taking the time tonight. I'm looking to, I'd appreciate your consideration for extending my garage out twenty-four feet. This, you know, the extension would stay within all the setbacks, front, side. The issue is, obviously, the current home is thirty-three hundred square feet. By adding this addition on, I would exceed the fifty percent limit by fourteen point two percent. So I'm looking to, to do that, to keep it as close as I can to the current home and not extend further out. I look at it as kind of a, of a math issue. I'd like to have the same look going forward in order to park cars in there.
So do you have a three-car garage now?
Yes. I'd like to extend it out, three more cars.
Three more cars? For six cars?
Yes.
Oh, so they'll be parked like this?
They'll be double-stacked inside the garage, correct.
All right.
Any other questions on the board?
What is the depth of the current garage?
The current garage is, well, to where it's useful, eighteen point eight feet.
Which is part of your issue, is the fact that a normal vehicle, suburban truck, you can't fit in that space currently, correct?
Correct, you need twenty-four feet, so.
So you're adding that on to it while you're still getting that eighteen feet?
I can fit smaller cars in there, right?
I understand.
Any other questions? These are good questions. I'll open this to the public, anyone like to comment on this item? Close the public hearing, get me back for a motion, discussion.
I do have a question.
Isn't this a variance?
Isn't this a variance?
Both, yeah, it's both.
Yeah, it is.
Just a variance.
Oh, just a variance.
Yeah, there's no permission because of the hatch.
There's no permission because it's attached.
It's attached. We're just, they study it out, yeah.
It just shows it a little differently.
Yeah.
Unless anybody's ready, I'll make the motion.
You or me?
I would love to.
Okay.
In regards to the appeal at eight seventy Bloomcrest Drive for the total accessory square footage issue, I move the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards of practical difficulty because compliance with strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because the current depth of your garage does not adequately allow you to use the garage for current vehicles. As well as, there's no injustice to adjoining neighbors by the reasons of you are doing all the setbacks correctly, and again, you're trying to match the aesthetics of the home. Unique circumstances of this property have been demonstrated based on the fact that, again, the interior dimensions of the garage are not suitable for today's vehicles. It's not self-created because you didn't set the garage to be eighteen feet. If you're a car guy, you would have made it deeper when you built the house. If all approved, applications for all necessary permits must be made within one year of the proposed addition for home and garage. And not going to have additional evergreen screening because it's part of the structure.
Oh, yes.
Support.
Support.
So I have a motion in support, any discussion? Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Enjoy those cars.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Calling item six, five five four five Foreman Drive, is the applicant, ready?
Hi, good evening, my name is John Guma, here representing the five five four five Foreman. So we have, so we renovated this house, and during a final inspection, one of the inspectors says we may need to come to, for a variance on that fire pit. It's a natural wood fire pit. It is approximately two, four, it's, it's, on the drawings, it shows it as round, but it's actually square. And we do have association approval. It is about eighteen inches in height, and it's approximately a hundred and ten feet from the rear yard lot line, and it's approximately twenty-five feet from the south, um, south, yes, side yard setback. And just looking to seek approval for this. It's a natural wood.
Any questions from the board? Open this to the public for comment, anyone that would like to comment on this item? We have someone, thank you.
Thank you, my name is Bill Wickers. My wife and I live on the house immediately south of the house that's identified here. And I have two concerns, not, not really with the pit itself, but with its use and operation. One is a personal concern, I have severe cenophilic asthma and compromised lung function that's less than forty percent. So wood smoke is a serious health threat for me. When we had the Canadian wildfire smoke a while back, I was basically incapacitated. So if this is used, I'd appreciate it if some condition could be imposed on any approval you give, restricting its use to those times when wind is not going to blow the smoke over towards our house. Even inside, there's no way to seal it up in a way that prevents outside air from getting in completely, and it becomes an issue. But the second concern I have is a more general community concern, and something I think all of you would be concerned with as well. If we can put these up. Yeah, just show the whole thing if you want, can we do that? Okay. The picture on the top is an aerial photo, it's from about two or three years ago, it's the most recent I could find, that shows the way this area looked prior to the reconstruction of the house in question. And you can see it's all heavily wooded, not just the lot that's outlined there, which, which is Mr. Petrus's home, but all around there, and even beyond the area shown in that picture. The one below it is the way it looks today because most all of the trees have been removed from Mr. Petrus's lot. You can still see, however, on either side and even in the back, there is natural native woodland, and it's been maintained like that for about a hundred years in this area. My concern is that this is the way it looks. That fence is Mr. Petrus's fence, it's on the lot line. And my lot is on the right-hand side there, you can see, it's heavily wooded. But in addition to that, below you can see where the, the actual fire pit is, it's, it's some distance away. But as you know, I'm, I'm sure you've all seen bonfires, when you have a wood fire, embers, burning embers get carried up in the air, and wind can blow them quite some distance. So when you have a forested area like this nearby, you have a situation that's a setup for the, like they had the fires in California or up in the Grayling area a few years ago, which I was able to witness in person, and I can tell you, it's terrifying. It goes very fast, it's very intense, and it's very hard to stop. Here's another picture of the way the woods look, and you can see that on the floor, forest floor, you're going to get some leaf accumulation and other debris. That can catch fire very easily, and again, spreads very quickly. If you look about in the center of those two pictures, you'll see the house that's just behind me. That's ten feet off of the lot line in the back, ten feet from the forest. So I'm really concerned about the fire risk with any kind of an open fire like this. And I would suggest that there's at least one thing you could do that would help to reduce that risk. These are available for fire pits. They're what are called spark arrestors. And they do a pretty good job of catching and preventing burning embers of any size from getting away from, escaping from the fire and getting blown around in the wind. So I would ask that you at least, if you approve this, require that he employ one of these spark arrestors to prevent that risk of fire and some, some really dramatic consequences for any that would occur. That's it.
Thanks so much, appreciate your comments. All right, so I'll close the public hearing and then ask the applicant to respond to the comments. Alright, so I'll close the public hearing and then ask the applicant to respond to the comments.
I'm back. Yeah, so it's approximately twenty-five feet away from the nearest lot line. If they make such size that it can accommodate that square existing natural wood fireplace, that screening, sure, no problem. If you need to have a fire extinguisher there near it, sure, no problem. I just don't know if they make that size. If they do, we will look into it, sure.
Okay.
How do you enforce it? Good neighbor? I mean, we're saying we will.
Well, I imagine if there is a complaint that goes to the fire department because of your fire pit, when they come out, they would determine if it's appropriate or not, right?
Sure.
Do we have an?
I mean, it's just.
And that does occur.
We have a number of wood burning fire pits.
Yes, and then the fire department, if they, it's too smoky or the wind's going in the neighbor's direction, they get a phone call, usually they tell you to put it out.
Sure.
And then after a few, I imagine there is an ordinance or some type of penalty. Do you know if there's anything?
Well, we do allow for open fire pit burning with approval. So it would be a complaint-driven response if there was continuing problems and that would have to be addressed as part of your ZBA approval. I mean, we would enforce it, but I would, I understand the question. In responding to Chris, what he said too is that it is, really would be a complaint-driven issue if there were concerns or issues.
No problem.
So it depends on what the motion entails.
It's only eighteen inches in height. It's just him and his wife, so I believe they're responsible adults to know how high your fire really should be or not.
Yeah. I know he had a concern about the timing of when you're burning wood with his health condition. So I didn't know if you had any thoughts or any comments about that.
I mean, it depends which way the wind is blowing, right?
It does, it does. And that's, I know it's a challenge, but.
I mean, if it is a windy day and it is going that way, I'm sure you'd be courteous to your neighbor and you keep it lower, don't do it at all.
And in windy days, I mean, just generally speaking, I mean, you usually.
You're not out sitting by the fire because it's blowing in you.
Right. It's usually, that's a condition that you would say is not a good data, to burn wood when it's windy. I mean, most people know that, so.
To the same credit, we can't stop people from using a wood burning fireplace in their home.
Correct.
Whether it's windy or not. So I can have a fire in my fireplace at home, which has no jurisdiction with the township, and it could still cause smoke to go into my neighbor's property.
Correct.
And there's no complaint or ordinance that the township couldn't enforce because that's my right.
Correct.
So I find that to be somewhat of a moot point in this argument.
I agree with you.
So, and I can appreciate the asthma and those things.
I can too.
It seems like there are green trees that are near it, that are continuously maintained to stop any of the spread of smoke and/or sparks that may get into that area. Twenty-five feet is a pretty fair distance. Somebody who's actually fought wild wildfires once or twice, I understand. They are move and scary and can be fast, but you also, if you have a hose or some of those things, you can put out a lot of fire in that timeframe. So I imagine these adults would be mature and know how to use it.
Absolutely.
So I have no problem. I'll make a motion unless anybody else has a problem.
Make your motion.
May I have one?
Yeah, so I'm sorry, the public comment is closed.
So in regards to the appeal at five five four five Foreman Drive for the accessory structure of the pre-existing fire pit, I move the request be approved as submitted. Based on information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance for section forty-two dash seven-six standards because the size of the accessory structure is compatible with the adjoining properties based on the fact that we have other wood burning open fire pits in our township. Now, if this motion is approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year and all permits must be maintained, obtained prior to construction. We're not going to require any additional evergreen screenings that be required because you already have some. I'm just going to put in there that if we continue to give complaints, and that's where we're going to have an issue and we're going to let the planning and building department do it. I don't think we're going to have that, I think we have mature people. That, and then if you can try to find an appropriate spark.
Retarder.
Retarder, that would be important.
Sure.
Support.
I have a motion and support, any discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted. Calling next item, item seven, four eight nine six Lock Lomond.
Hello, everyone, and thank you for your time. I'm here to seek approval for.
So your name and address?
Sorry, my name is Francis Keshat. I'm the general contractor representing Brandon and Carmen Semmo, which I saw just, the name might not have been proper on this.
That's the previous name?
Yeah. But regardless, I'm here seeking approval for a twenty by forty-four foot pool along with a fence and a sports court. So the pool is going to be located on the east side of the property, which would extend to that side yard, which is technically a front yard with the Inkster Road frontage. So yeah, you would see on this photo on the left is going to be the east side, which already has some screening. I mean, it's definitely not the best, in my opinion, but we do propose to plant some extra screening where there's open areas that would be visible from Inkster Road. Along with, when we build the fence, that would get some additional arborvitae's that are going to be at least six foot tall. As far as the west side of the property, we're proposing a sports court, which would be thirty by sixty or thirty-four by sixty-four. That hasn't been finalized yet. I mean, if it needs to be a little smaller, we might do so. That area is ninety percent screened with, I mean, very old pine trees that you would see in neither of these pictures. So on the two top pictures, that's going to show the west side of the property. There's just that small opening in the back, which we would definitely make sure to screen with something, depending on the size of the containment netting for the sports court. I did propose up to twelve feet, but we might go with something smaller. I mean, eight, ten feet, depending on what your guys' comments might be. So that's what we're thinking as far as that side goes. On the back lot, that's, I mean, ninety percent screened. The neighbor behind them does have a pool as well, so it, whatever, I mean, my clients do care for privacy and they do want everything to be screened properly. So if there's minor areas that they might want to fill in, we will do accordingly.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, I have a couple. These sports courts that come before us seem to keep growing.
Yeah.
Alright. And personally, I think that the sports court you're proposing is too big.
Okay.
Additionally, we do not grant twelve-foot tall fences around sports courts. Okay? So you'd probably be looking at something of six to eight feet.
Okay.
Possibly.
Because it's just to catch the balls.
Yes.
Yeah, correct.
How small are you willing to go with the size of the sports court?
I mean, something, so a pickleball court would require something very close to a thirty by sixty area.
We looked at this recently and looked up the dimensions and it doesn't require that much.
No.
It was a tennis.
He looked up tennis.
It was tennis and doubles.
Does pickleball require more or less?
Less.
Less, right?
Yeah.
So the intent of this sports court is pickleball?
Pickleball and basketball, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, well, that's, okay.
So with pickleball comes noise. Has your clients explored noise mitigation type systems? We've had clients coming before us talking about privacy and wanting to be good neighbors.
Yeah.
They put in systems in place and type of screening so that it can help absorb sound. And it went both ways. It now only absorbed the sound from their neighbors, their neighbor's pool, their neighbor's thing, but also that their noise didn't get out.
Yeah, right.
That way they don't get those complaints and then they can utilize their sports court to the fullest.
Yes, sir.
Has your clients explored that?
So if you could see, like, on the top end of that sports court, I mean, we do plan to plant some mature arborvitae's that are going to be the height of the netting, which if it's in the case of six to eight feet, we can certainly match or exceed that with whether Emerald Green or Green Giant arborvitae's to contain that noise. As far as the structure of the base of the sports court, they haven't decided on a specific material yet, whether it's going to be those rubber flooring or whether it's going to be a turf, any of which, I mean, definitely produce some noise. But with, I mean, if you guys have a condition of us to do additional screening besides that existing, I mean, there are twenty, twenty to thirty feet pine trees along that whole side of the yard.
And I don't know if it's, again, in the other case, they actually bought a type of fencing material on top of arborvitae's that absorb sound. So it helped mitigate it, so again, so that people can enjoy it. Because the biggest complaint with those is the noise.
Okay.
So again, from both sides, we want our people to be able to enjoy these improvements they put in, but they want them to be good neighbors.
Yeah.
So that is like my biggest sticking point with these.
Yeah, so we haven't explored any of those options. Should that be a condition, we could certainly figure out what we need to do to make sure that happens.
That sounds great.
Any other questions from the board? I'll open this to the public. Anyone like to comment on this item? Just come forward and give us your name and address.
Hi, my name's Tom Bastian. I am at forty-eight, forty-eight ninety-one Lock Lomond, just across the street. And I've watched this house be constructed for a little over two-plus years. What I saw in the package, there was a, I guess, a deviation request based on a natural stone wall, which is a wall, retaining wall they have behind the house. It's not natural, it was put there. I guess I'm asking, because I don't know what the variance is, it just says it's a variance. We don't know if it's a sixteen-foot setback, are they asking to use eight feet of it, all sixteen feet of it? One, I don't, I don't know what that is. So I was, I'm trying to understand how much variance is really happening because there's a lot of this, it could still fit behind the back of the house and still fit accordingly to the township's zoning variances or zoning.
I can answer that real quickly.
So if you look on that picture, you see how we have the pool set horizontally? So since it exceeds that part of the porch that's furthest east, that's the variation to the variance because technically that part of the yard is a front yard.
Right, so I'm across the street from this and I have the same issue. So the front yard, side yard variance, which, you know, a little deviation there for the pool, I'm okay with. I can't speak to all of the other neighbors there, but you guys brought up some of the other things that were a concern, the sound of the pickleball, thank you for that. The size of the sport court, the size of the fence. So you guys have addressed all that, so I didn't have to. But we are a little concerned about that. The house is a very nice house. It does appear that they're going to follow, you know, the rules, but I just think in what I read in the document that was sent out, a lot of it was based on the existing retaining wall. And for all the time that this building has been going on, heavy equipment that's been there, it's never been considered to move that wall and bring those back into variance, that's.
As far as things go on my end, I was brought into the picture maybe a month and a half or so ago. I did draw the proposal.
Could you step up to the microphone so that, I mean, well, why don't we have you address it after the public hearing? You can address all of the.
Do you have something you want to add?
Yeah, do you already finish?
Well, yeah.
So if you're finished, you have to sit down.
Okay.
One person at a time.
Have a neighbor party up here at the podium.
So what's your name and address?
Good evening, I'm Mary Jevaharian, I'm at four eight eight two Lock Lomond. I am the neighbor on the east side. He's got the directions a little backwards because the pool is on the west side and the pickleball court is on the east side.
You're right, you're right.
Okay.
I did just realize that.
Okay, I just wanted to say that. So, yeah, so I am the second house in. And I just have a few concerns I wanted to bring up. I think the biggest one is the potential noise with the pickleball court. It's a pretty quiet neighborhood. What I understand is that the decibels can be somewhere in the range of sixty or something. And where they have it positioned right now, there is an opening. On the one drawing, he's shown a little bit of, right there, on the left-hand side. So that little bright green scribble, scribble scrabble, right there. That opening is into my backyard. So, and the trees that are to the right of that are about thirty to forty feet tall. They've been there for a number of years. So my concern would be is, if you're going to put the sports court there, even if you're going to make it smaller, I do think that there needs to be some additional either screening or sound barrier or the acoustic panels or barriers, like was mentioned earlier. There was also mention of no lighting on either the pool or the sports court, which was a slight concern because I think if you're going to invest in those types of recreational items, that there would be some lighting. And my concern obviously isn't on the west side, it would be on the east side of the sports court and if there was any lighting. So I, myself and my husband both believe that the fence is too tall. Twelve feet is too tall. And we would request that the board does not grant any variances for that fencing. But possibly put in place screening that would be as tall as the height of either the nets or the court itself. So that's it.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else would like to speak on this item?
Hi, I'm Drew Zerba, I'm at forty-eight seven seven Ball and Tray, which is right behind, one of the two homes behind, I'm the second home in. First home in is Arden Shaw. And so this home is behind both of us. And it just, you've pretty much indicated all the concerns that we really had. And I just spoke with George Darboyan, my neighbor, who also is kind of in the, he can see through there. And his concern was this noise as well. So I just wanted to indicate the noise, the height of the fence, and thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Arden Shaw and I live directly behind the house. I'm at forty-eight ninety-one Ball and Tray, so I'm that other corner lot behind. There is a lot of vegetation between our lots and I would like to make sure that it's going to stay there. I was a little concerned when I read about fencing and the height of the fence and there was some confusion about which end was going to be pickleball and which end was going to be pool. And it sounds like there's still some things that could be modified, but they're not set in stone yet. I would like to postpone any approval and have them come up with better plans. More complete plans for lighting, which concerns me, the bright lights. This subdivision, I've been there forty years, year after year after year, we vote down street lighting. We don't want a lot of bright lights. It's a cozy little community, it's quiet for the most part. And the noise, the lighting and fencing that wouldn't look like anything else in the subdivision, being that tall, are concerns. That's all.
If I can just comment, we do not allow the sports court, courts to have illumination.
You don't allow what?
No, it's just daylight hours.
Just daylight hours, yeah.
Oh, really? Okay, I didn't know that.
Do it for longer.
And hockey rinks as well, in case anyone wants a hockey.
Yeah, they only have daytime use.
Yeah.
That's why I thought I'd let you know because I know that's everyone's concern.
Yeah. Okay, so anyone else would like to speak? I'll close the public hearing, have the applicant respond to the comments, so.
Yeah, so I appreciate all your guys' input and.
You can talk to us.
Sorry about that. I appreciate the input by everybody, all the neighbors, and we'll definitely make sure that any issues with noise will be addressed. we'll definitely make sure that any issues with noise will be addressed and addressed appropriately. I know these are all very close neighbors, so hearing from them directly definitely puts it into perspective and puts a face on who I wanna look after. Because of course, my goal is to look after my clients, but I'm a person just like everybody else. I know what it's like to be in a neighborhood and have neighbors. I mean, mutual respect is always sought, and that's the, that's the goal with, I'm sure, my clients along with myself. So-
So, April, there's no lights, correct?
No lights.
And what about the size?
So, we can, we can try it and dim it down depending on what's appropriate and what you guys allow. I know my clients were, were looking for the thirty-by-sixty area to support the basketball and the pickleball. If that's something that we have to dial down a bit, I can address that with them, and I'm, I'm sure they'd be okay with it.
And the screening, so, all right, so it sounds-
And the height of the fence?
Yeah, the height of the fence, you're saying?
Height, so the height of the fence throughout the perimeter of the property will be consistent around four to five feet for the pool, but then-
We're talking about the netting, so instead of the twelve, I mean, you don't need, I mean-
Yeah, we don't need twelve, so if it's eight foot, I mean, we can work with eight feet. Just gotta-
It sounds to me like your clients need to consider what's been said tonight and look at that sports court area, and maybe do a little redesign.
Okay.
And I would be inclined to table this tonight to give you the opportunity to do that.
I would like to say one thing before we table it. The biggest thing for me is sound.
Yeah.
So, whether it's additional evergreen screening, that's, that's kind of like the lowest bar.
Yeah, right.
So again, another, you can look, there are acoustic panels that can be put on it that'll address the sound, but again, it goes both ways. It'll also make it quieter for your clients when they're utilizing their space. I believe that'll go a long way in getting your clients across the finish line of the things that they may want. Since everything's a negotiation, I would put that at the top.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay.
So-
Now, do those come at certain heights, or, I mean, because I-
They do, again, it was, the Birmingham Athletic Club just did it, and then also did a acoustic sound to ensure that the sound that is coming off of their area was then on the neighbor's property not increased.
Yeah.
And they looked into it, and went both ways, and again-
Yeah, product called Acoustiscreen, I think they called it. Acoustiscreen, it wasn't necessarily panels, but I think that was the name of it, but there's other things out there.
Bill, okay, Acousti Block.
So-
Acousti Block?
So, again, if that could be incorporated in any part of your design, I have a feeling it would go a long way in not only winning over your neighbors, but winning over the permission that you're looking for.
And I think they also make paddles and balls that have, you know, lower sound emissions, so can't require that. But I'm just saying, it sounds like you're open to maybe talking to the neighbors that are here. You seem to be very open to that. I, I think that would be a good idea as well, to sort of, you know, you know, bring them into the changes that you're gonna come back and, and present to us the next time you're here.
Okay. With that being said-
If we vote to postpone. So I don't know, do we?
I support that.
He did wanna say something.
With that being said, would we be postponing specifically the permission for the sports court, or would the, would we be able to vote on the variance for the pool? Because we, we do wanna get that done this year.
Well, I, I don't... All right, I'm prepared to make a motion, okay?
Go ahead, go right in.
Are we good? All right. With respect to the property located at four-eight-nine-six Locklomond Drive, I would move to grant the dimensional variance for the location of the pool and the pool fence, because the applicant has demonstrated practical difficulty. The difficulty is based upon the fact that the property has two frontages and the, sort of an odd-shaped lot. It has the rock retaining wall, which impacts the location of the pool, and also the fence is required for safety. That having been said, if the application for this is approved, all necessary permits for the pool and the pool fence must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to screening, or to construction, and evergreen plantings will be required to screen the pool and the pool fence. With respect to the request for the sports court and fence netting for the sports court, I would move to table that for a future meeting for the applicant to address some of the concerns that were raised tonight. Support.
So I have a motion and support any discussion. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted in part, and tabled in part.
Sounds good.
You'll hear from somebody from our department that can assist you on your next steps moving forward.
Sounds good, I appreciate it, guys.
Thank you.
So calling the next item, item eight, five-two-five-five Pond Valley.
And this one's no pergola, right?
Correct.
Good evening, Board, my name is Ellen Yurk, I'm with Antalya Landscape, representing David and Andrea Jacobson at five-two-five-five Pond Valley Road. Just to clarify what you see in front of you, there is a little change on- There's a little change on the written description of this project, because I understand the pergola is permitted, it did not need zoning board approval, it's within all the ordinances. So we're asking for a approval on the construction of a fireplace feature within this new room that's being constructed. It's a pergola feature connected to the home. These are the renderings we've created for clarification of where it sits. It's on, right off the back of the home. There's a pool in this property, and now the, an area for shade and gathering for dining. They're adding the fireplace. They already have a grill there, so this is a nice outdoor room. The fireplace being over four feet is why we're seeking approval tonight. It's going to be five feet, eight inches to establish the right ratio for this room and the mantel piece as well. This is not wood burning, it's gas, so there's no extra fumes, and it's quiet. There is no extra sound for Christopher to be happy with this. So, that's the essential improvements of the space. If there's any questions regarding what's planned for, I'd be happy to continue description of the installation.
So you call it a room, which is interesting. So it's got a floor, right, so it's, it just lays on top of-
Pavers, yeah, like a patio.
Okay, so it's like a-
Outdoor room, you know, we're, we're building spaces here, but, yeah. It's not an interior thing whatsoever.
No, no, I get it, but I just was kind of trying to understand the base of it. So it's pavers at the base, and then the, the fireplace sits on top of that and the seating.
The fireplace will be constructed on a footing based on the materials we're using.
Okay.
So there's a forty-two-inch footing to make sure that this is like solid, and not going anywhere. But the pavers are on a regular, more like a twelve-inch compacted stone, twenty-one double-A layer, and then a bedding sand, and then the pavers are about two inches, and we fill the joints with polymeric sand.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions?
Just a quick question, just for clarification. She mentioned it was five feet versus the four feet for the fireplace. Is a dimensional variance required for that?
No, our ordinance is actually kind of written in a way that if you don't meet the criteria to be allowed and permitted by right, then it kinda diverts to the permission request under accessory structure.
I want to be sure.
So it's not over fourteen feet, so to answer your question, it'd just be a permission.
Great.
Here on a technicality.
But it's a great experience here, you like coming.
I love it here. I feel like this is my regular Tuesday night.
You've had a lot of challenging ones, so we're happy.
I know, I think this one is easy, but I, I appreciate all the knowledge you guys have in making our team more on the side of the things the city wants, what the township permits, and ultimately giving our customers and clients the best experience to move forward with their projects. So this is, this is what we should expect in a way. So I appreciate, you know, your willingness to let me come almost every other month, so thank you for that.
Okay, so with that, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone that would like to comment on this item? Close the public hearing, bring back for discussion or motion.
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay.
In regards to the appeal at five-two-five-five Pond Valley Road for the accessory structure, I move the request to be approved as submitted based on information presented. The applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section forty-two dash seven-six standards, because the use of accessory structure is appropriate to the neighborhood, as many people have outdoor rooms or spaces, including accessory fireplaces. If approved, the motion will include applications for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction, and I'm not gonna require additional evergreen screenings to be reviewed.
Support.
I have a motion and support any discussion. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you, Board, I'll see you soon.
Calling the next, next item, five-one-eight-five Long Meadow.
Good evening, I'm Dan McLeish, with Twin Pines Landscape, representing Mr. and Mrs. David Willner, and David is here with us this evening, asking for a few items on their newly constructed home on Long Meadow. So, in the last few weeks there, Mr. Willner, he went door-to-door, asking all the adjacent neighbors if they had any concerns, and he had all favorable responses, that everybody was in favor of the items that we're asking for. And that's pretty much what we're looking at.
Well, you heard my last comment about the size of the sports court.
Yes.
So, and yours is a third-
Even bigger.
Thirty percent bigger than that, so.
Well, it's a basketball, and so we originally started on the path of sixty by one-twenty for tennis. So, we necked it down so it could be a little bit more of a practice tennis court, but then it's, you, we can play basketball on it.
It's like a full court?
And, and the other thing is too, is, yeah, it is full-court basketball, yes. And we're screening it all the way around with dense evergreens of Western Cedar. All the neighbors are at least probably a hundred to two-hundred feet away from this area. There's two houses adjacent that have hockey rinks already that were permitted with the township as well.
They're not playing much hockey now, though.
No, not right now, no, no, no. But the kids, in the summer, they still get out there on the rollerblades on the hockey rink, so it's, you know, so two seasons, you know, for that. So, it's a very sizable yard, and we looked at many things, and so the proportion fits in the yard with the landscape plan that, you know, if you look back, is quite a big sense of landscaping that we're looking to do as well.
Could I bring a couple, just, so at that vision that you're looking at, you see my property at five-one-eight-five, five-one-six-five, that house is under renovation. I thought that that house would be bought and a new house would be built. They're adding onto that house in the current location. They are the Fidels. I went to each of the neighbors that are bordering it. I got, took the full plans from the ZB over the last few days, it wasn't before. I wanted to make sure they had exactly what was submitted to you guys. I sat on a zoning board before. I went to them, I went over every single point, and I got, and I had Andrea, I turned those into her. The subdivision also approved it. I have stamped approvals, I wanted to keep those, but the subdivision approved it. Brian Butler from our Bloomfield Association approved that plan. But I wanna bring out, it's not a hundred feet, I'm probably, that court, since I'm putting it to the back left corner of that property, is probably no closer than four or five hundred feet from any of those houses, because the property that's to my left, his house is built within five feet of the property line. The property to my right is totally shielded by the new house that's being built, and everybody else is in the back. The house to the left has a hockey court, which, Christopher, you are near and dear to sound. I've gotten used to it even during the construction. Horcough is another hockey rink that's off of the back corner, plays all summer, you know, all winter, sorry. And then they cool those also, so they can go a little bit longer in the season. So although it's a basketball court, that's my son's love, I would be able, love to play pickleball, I would be cognizant of the sound, but we're putting dense trees also, which will border that entire property. I removed a lot of trees and I have to replace, and we're putting a densely forested area. So, I hired Mr. McLeish, because he does a wonderful job of landscaping, and I would like to be able to see his vision occur with him and Zarambo, who are the people that designed it.
What is, what's the size of the lot? What's the acreage?
Two-point-one-four, I believe. That's what I get from Land Glide, which is my thing, I don't know, but it's over two acres. I know that the back is over three, two-hundred-and-eighty-six feet in the back and a hundred-and-fifty feet in the front, so the neighbor of the property to the north-ish, their property's even wider. That property has a little teeny piece, it's in Bloomfield Hills. I tried to acquire that, but I was trying to move up one lot so I could get Bloomfield Hills sewers, but didn't work.
I think we're better than Bloomfield Hills, personally.
Yes, and, and you have been. Everybody that I've ever come into unseen at the city has always been kind, including your assessor, I hope he's kind when I get done with this. Put in a good word.
Yeah, it's good, the public being to say that, so good for you.
And if, and if you have any further questions about those screening walls, there was one comment from the president of the association, he had wrote an email, we've been a good conversation, he's in one of those lists. He said that the subdivision has no jurisdiction over fences or screen walls. That one that's in the front, part of it is, because the septic field is up there, so it's sort of a retaining wall on one side, because they're raising it like three feet on the, on the northernmost front corner over there, and on the other side, it's still a screen wall, but the house is a one-hundred percent symmetrical, I'm obsessed with that, so I've been trying to have symmetry, so I have a retaining wall on one side, that opposite wall of that in the front, will, will probably raise the land who wants to do it, but right now, we're asking for that. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, I'll open this to the public. Anyone like to comment on this item? Close the public hearing, bring it back to the board.
All right, I guess I'll start. So, I did go by your site today. You actually make it hard for people to walk in your backyard, so good for you. I do have a problem-
Did you do it anyway?
No.
I was there almost all day.
I came there, I came here this evening, and you guys actually like to put the fence up and do it, so I was, I was trying to see where that size was, because we, from my perspective on the trustee board, I get complaints on these. So, I wanna, I want you to be able to have your dream, I want your son to be able to have the basketball court. I agree with a lot of those things. I don't want your neighbors to have that impact. I don't want you to have to hear your neighbor's hockey arena either. So, would you be willing to put those acoustic panels up as part of your thing?
I, I truly would prefer not to, because I believe that in this case, there is so much distance between everywhere, and the hockey court is right to my, right next to my property line, and the other one is right in the corner of my property line, and nobody is within five hundred feet of me. Every neighbor that I met with, I said that, hey, if I do play pickleball, if it's ever bothering you, please reach out to us. I'll try and find quieter balls and things, but I think putting acoustical panels, I, I wouldn't even probably like the, the look of them, but if it was necessary and I was hassling people, I for sure would. My wife and I wanna be good neighbors, I've already met everybody. I show up at the subdivision cleanups, and I have a good relationship with everybody there. I wouldn't cause anybody any harm. I'm not gonna be playing at six in the morning if I play pickleball and waking up people and having them call you guys or myself.
So you're not planning on playing pickleball, but you're saying you may move into that?
I'm sure, my wife and I, I'm fifty-nine and a half, my wife's a little bit younger. I'm sure that's the sport that, and I do play some, so sure, I would like to be able to play that too. I'm not gonna say that it wouldn't be, but my son, who's seventeen, loves basketball and plays like a lunatic with his friends, and we have guests over, we play that speed thing and whatever. Our house is really for entertaining, that's what we're building it for, for entertaining friends and family, so. I would prefer that I, if I didn't have to acknowledge that that's a sole remedy, because I feel that my remedy is, my location and where I'm sitting and what's surrounding me that you've already approved, and it doesn't come with any of those things, I think it'd be unjust to just apply it to me when I have two hockey rinks that my neighbors say are pretty loud, and I've heard them doing construction. So, I'm just in that area, there's a ton of pickleball courts in that subdivision. So I'm, yeah, so if it was causing a problem, sure, I would address it, and you could put that in the record.
Obviously, you make a good point. The other thing is, your neighbors, how long has your construction been going on for?
Not long. We broke ground at the beginning of the summer, we stopped for a while, because the water table was high, so technically, we've been building aggressively since about May or June of last year, and we hope to be in by like January. We're setting record time.
That, that's great.
Yep.
So again, your neighbors have heard that construction, have not been complaining, not been causing issues, because again, they understand it's a short period of time.
Yes.
So, they don't also know how long that other noise is gonna be from your sports court. And you heard what we said to the other candidate, we actually, and your, and your sports court is bigger.
Yeah.
And again, because you wanna play basketball, which an NBA basketball court is fifty by ninety.
Ninety-four by one, but ninety-four by fifty plus the buffer zones, so.
Correct. So, you're asking-
So that's about where it's at, ninety-four by sixty-four.
So.
You must be in good shape.
I try to stay in good shape, but I've lost some weight.
If you're going ninety-four feet, that's-
Well, the older people will be playing half court.
Shaq couldn't go ninety-four feet, so you're, you're better than Shaq.
I promise, Board, that's the concern, I promise that I will be a good neighbor. In the neighbors, there's been a ton of sanding and grinding, and I've been a good neighbor to ask if it's been bothering anybody, make sure the dust from the construction. I mean, I try and always be a good neighbor. I sat on boards like yourself, and I care, so I try and do things right.
I'm ready to make a motion, no one else is?
Please do.
No more questions?
I just, you make an observation, he keeps talking about hockey courts. I, I don't think we've ever approved a hockey court, so I'm actually someone that's got a sports court that's using rollerblades on-
No, ice rinks, you mean hockey rinks.
Ice rinks.
Yeah.
But they're not, they're not using- But they're not, they're not using, they're not playing on an ice rink now, is my point.
At this moment, but last winter.
And every time we apply, we approve the ice rink, there is a end date that everything has to be pulled up. So it can't be what we approved for the winter.
No, these were, these were approved.
Approved and during the winter. They have, they're electrical. They have heating and cooling systems that run during that period and cool it. So it goes from earlier than fall to a little bit past spring.
The kids play on them in the summer.
Okay, well, I don't want to drag that out.
Those aren't mine, and I don't play hockey, and I never have.
Yeah, so it must, it must be a sports court that they're rollerblading on.
No, no, we came here, I don't know, four years ago and had them.
They're approved as hockey rinks.
Year-round hockey rinks.
Not yet, I don't know if.
No, we, we built the, I don't know, probably five years ago, the one to the southeast of Mr. Willner. It's, I don't know what the size was at the time. It was sixty by, geez, I don't know what it was.
Well, we've given, we've given some of those, we've given approval for a number of years.
Yeah, it's got boards and glass and all that. We came in here probably four or five years ago, had it approved that way.
And Christopher, the stick hitting the puck and hitting the boards is louder than the pickleball.
And that's where the acoustic panels come in both ways. So the other company that did it, they were doing it so now when their own clients have a quieter, they also made sure. And again, I really appreciate it, and it went through the ZBA without any problems, so. That's something I like, and again, I, I appreciate it, and I know that you're investing your home. It's a beautiful home. But that isn't, that is never my concern.
And you're welcome to see the yard.
It's making sure that you get to continue to use that sports court without problems or hassle from your neighbors, who sometimes don't want to be conflict with neighbors, and you can understand that. It's easier to call the ordinance guy than it's sometimes to have a hard conversation with your neighbor.
If that occurs, I will deal with it, I promise.
All right, let's go with the motion.
Okay, I will force a motion.
Okay, in regard to the appeal at five-one-eight-five Long Metal Road, for the several accessory structures of a spa sports court, landscape walls, enclosed dog run. I move that the request be approved as submitted. Based on information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with section forty-two dash seven-point-six standards, because the use of the accessory structures is appropriate for the neighborhood as these are common structures, as well as the accessory structure should not be objectional to nearby neighbors by the reason, for the fact that he's going to be a wonderful neighbor. And if he has any issues, he said that he will address them at the time. And I also appreciate the fact that you did talk to the neighbors, and that you took time to do that, and we did appreciate that. So with that said, if approved, the motion also includes application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. Additional evergreen plantings will be required to screen this spa or sports court, if necessary, landscape and walls and dog run for the public view.
I have a motion and support. Any discussion?
I do. I will, as he had said, that if we get complaints and there are issues associated with the sports court, I would like that he is being, he'll have to put in that acoustic panels in order to mitigate the sound. Or have some other sound dampening installed in order to mitigate sound to your neighbor. If we get complaints.
Well, well, okay.
That's only if there are complaints that are filed.
Well, we should, I want to. Treat those as separate things. I mean, a complaint would be handled differently by the township.
Right, because I was gonna say.
I don't know if that would be a condition of the.
The variance.
I would like to strike that from the motion and let the department handle that.
Right.
But what, what enforcement do they have then?
The problem is she's made her motion, and she has to agree to that amendment or, you know.
Okay.
So.
Well, unless.
So we've got a motion. Is someone second in the motion?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so now we're discussing it. So you're saying you, you would like the motion be amended?
If we would be willing to, as he has stated, if he does have those problems, he'd be willing to put those in. Do you guys not think that that is necessary?
But isn't that a problem for, you know, now we've got a, you know, enforcement issue and how many complaints?
I, I have a problem with adding that to the, the motion, only for the mere fact that we don't know how it shall be addressed. I mean, it could be remedied by panels or whatever, depending on the type of complaint, who's complaining, where.
Whether it's a legitimate complaint?
Correct, so I'm not quite sure if I would want to put that in there. And then the other part of it is, is that he did take time to get support from neighbors who are supportive of it. So already, you know, people already kind of know what's coming. So my thought is if there's complaints, and he was just so open about saying that he would address that if necessary, then I think we may want to leave it there. That's just my thought. Because it's going to be contingent on the nature of the complaint.
Yeah, I think that would be problematic to implement and enforce, so I, I wouldn't be in favor of adding it.
I mean, I think your spirit in, you know, keeping it relatively quiet is, is good. I do think that he has a lot more space than some previous.
That's true, the size of the lot.
Yeah.
And that, that's a big differentiator for me, in the amount of, you know, vegetation he's got in the screening plan.
And the location of it too, where it's further away from a lot of other neighbors.
So we have motion and support.
With, with no change.
With no change. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you. And if I do have a problem, I'll work it out with the neighbors.
Enjoy running up and down that ninety feet. Calling the next item, item ten, eight-nine-five Pemberton.
Good evening. My name is Pete Alschev. I'm with AP Builders. I'm a contractor working with Dylan Rolita Kajbu at eight-nine-five North Pemberton. And we are asking approval or seeking approval for a variance on a, on a deck that's going into the rear and side setbacks. This particular lot is a double frontage lot. It's odd shaped. And because if you have the site plan, maybe, you'll see, can get blown up a little bit?
Yeah.
Great. You can see the outline of the setbacks that literally wrap around the entire home, almost point to point. We're asking if we can build a fourteen-by-twenty deck. It's approximately two-point-nine feet off the ground. We are vetted screening along the south side. Because of the rear setback line, it's not really eleven feet the entire way. It goes from eleven feet to about one foot. And then the, on the front setback, which is the south side, which is actually the side of the home, is only going into it approximately eight inches.
Yeah, you have an unusual shaped lot.
It's made it difficult for you to put the deck, you know, and meet our setback requirements. I think, I think we kind of get it. Any other questions from the board? I'll open this to the public.
No sport court, no. No acoustic panels.
We appreciate that as much as we enjoy discussing.
Are you going to play pickleball on that deck?
And the amount of noise from pickleball. Anyone like to speak on the?
Oh, we've talked to all the neighbors over a month ago. They're all aware of that. They have no issues.
Right, so, and none of them showed up, so I'll close the public hearing and bring it back for a discussion or a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
In regards to the appeal at eight-nine-five North Pemberton Road, for the dimensional variance for the setback going eleven feet into the forty-foot front yard setback, I move the variance to be approved as requested. Based on information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all stands for practical difficulty. Because compliance with strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome, because you have two front yard setbacks in the unique position of your lot. There is no injustice to adjoining neighbors by the reason of many people have decks, and this is not going to cause a hardship to any of them, and you're going to screen it from that one side to give you guys the privacy anyways. Unique circumstances with this property have been demonstrated based on the fact that, again, you have two frontages. And this is not self-created, because again, the lot was created prior to you guys buying it. So again, if approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. Additional evergreen screenings may be required, which you guys are already putting in along that southern thing, to view it, and must meet or exceed the height of the deck at planting, which I believe you guys are doing anyways.
Support.
So I have motion and support. Any discussion? Alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So calling item eleven-five-four-five-five Wayfind Lane.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Elvis Cami. I'm the owner at five-four-five-five Wayfind Lane, and my wife Tina. So we are here to seek approval for a pool in the back of our house. And I believe the, the approval for the pool is required because of the shape of our lot.
Yeah, so you have a secondary frontage, you have the same issue, you're trying to attack it behind the house, so. Any questions from the board? I'll open this to the public. Anyone like to speak on this item? I'll close the public hearing then, and bring it back to the board for a discussion or a motion.
I just have one question. The fence, is it going to be, it's going to be sixteen feet off the property line, correct?
It's just going to be around the pool.
The, the fence itself to be sixteen feet from the property line?
So, yeah, where are you planning on putting your fence?
It doesn't need to be, does it?
It doesn't need to be.
It doesn't need to be sixteen feet for a pool?
I thought the pool had to be sixteen feet.
We don't have a requirement for the setback for fencing that's related to a pool.
Okay.
Our homeowner association has a requirement of five feet from the property line. And yes, we are going to meet that requirement, and our homeowners association has approved this.
Perfect, and then you're just putting, you're putting plantings on both sides of that fence in order to?
Yes, yes.
Perfect.
Mr. Charlie, make a motion.
Please do, thank you.
In regards to the appeal at five-four-five-five Wayfind Lane, for the accessory structure, pool, and fence, I move the request to be approved as submitted based on information presented. The applicant did demonstrate compliance with section forty-two dash seven-point-six standards. Because of the, the space where the pool could be located, it's sitting on a unique lot, and it's still behind the house. I'd like that they screen both sides of the fence, so the fence is kind of visible from neighbors and as well as them. And I think this is the good placement for the house, or for, I'm sorry, for the pool. Application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. And I think they, I wouldn't ask for additional evergreen plantings, as this plan shows a, a great planting plan.
Support. I have a motion and support. Any discussion?
Quick question. This does not require a dimensional variance?
Because it's in the secondary frontage.
It's in the secondary front yard, that's why it's here, that I, he didn't do it, I was writing notes.
Oh, it's, oh, no.
It is a dimensional variance based on the location.
That's what I thought.
Correct.
Okay, it's written up as a permission request.
Oh my gosh, I'm sorry about that. It's a dimensional variance due to the location.
So I think all the reasons you gave are the same reasons.
The same reasons.
If you just want to amend to include the other stuff.
Yes, I'll amend my motion to a dimensional request. And I, and I can go through the reasons, like, compliance with strict letter of the law, of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome, because of the fact that we have a lot that is unique, and the house is sitting at an angle on the lot. There is no injustice to adjoining neighbors by reason that the, the pool and structure will not be visible because of screening, unique circumstances I mentioned earlier, and this is not self-created.
Support. So I have a motion and support. Any discussion? Alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
I'm calling the next item, item twelve, seven-three-three-two Lindenmere.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jerome Avot. I'm the owner with my wife Emily over there of the seven-three-three-two Lindenmere Drive. We are here tonight to seek approval for the installation of a tub in our backyard, in our existing patio. There's no variances. It's just going to be seven by seven, probably even smaller than that, by maximum four feet tall. And we are located sixty feet away from all the lines, the lot lines. The closest homes are at least one-hundred-and-fifty feet away, and we already have quite a lot of matriot trees all around. Any questions?
I have a couple of questions for you. The picture I'm looking at, it shows that you're going to put this hot tub on the patio. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right, that picture also shows a kick wall?
Yes.
Is that there?
Yes.
Okay.
It's been installed recently.
So it's going to be tucked in to that, okay.
Yeah. I think I got a new picture. I don't know if we have it.
Wasn't there another? Oh, I thought it was showing actually that a real, there, there you go.
Yeah, you can see it from there.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that he's tucking it in there.
Okay, so where that looks like a barbecue or something.
That's going to be the case. If you zoom in, you can see some blue tape on the ground, but you need to zoom a lot. Again, again, again. So that, that's where it's going. Can you zoom more? Yeah, 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 sorry for the leaves. Yeah, we have a lot of trees, as I said.
There's a lot of leaves, though.
Yes. Still somewhere, right?
Any other questions? So I'll open this to the public. Anyone like to speak on this item? Close the public hearing and bring it back to the board.
We did discuss with all the neighbors and they don't have any issue with the project.
Mr. Charlie, make a motion.
Please, thank you.
With regard to the appeal at seventy-three-thirty-two Lindenmere Drive for the accessory structure for the hot tub, I move that the request be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with section forty-two dash seven-point-six standards, because the use of the accessory structure is appropriate to the neighborhood, as there are many hot tubs that we have approved, just like this. So, if approved, the motion must include application for all necessary permits to be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. There is a comment here about additional evergreen plantings may be required to screen the hot tub from public view. Yet it does look as though this is very well screened, so I'm not going to include that.
Support.
I have a motion and support. Any discussion? Alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
No more screening?
Calling the next item, one-six-one-one Trading Post Lane.
Hello, my name is Walter Larrang. I live at sixteen-eleven Trading Post Lane. I brought my general contractor Bruce. Hopefully, he won't have to speak tonight. I can answer all your questions. We're requesting a fence permit for our new soak pool that we're putting in. I recently learned I have two front yards. I didn't know this until about thirty days ago, when we tried to get this project going. So we have a dual, is it dual frontage, I think is the term, and that's my hardship. My current house is only about thirty-five feet on one corner from the lot line, so it wouldn't allow me to, to live within the rules today as they're written. I spoke with my HOA board and our direct neighbors. They're supportive and sign letters. The fence is a four-foot standard aluminum black fence that we're requesting. Have a very mature lot line for the section that backs up to Franklin Road, which is my backyard but the second frontage. It's got a ton of, it's like a thicket. It's got mature arborvitae, it's got other trees, it's got buckthorn, and it runs for quite a ways. We also recently put in on the far side thirty new arborvitae and a berm there as well. So we, we like privacy. We want it to be as shielded as possible. You can't really see through that from the sidewalk on Franklin Road when you're walking down it, so that's the request. Happy to answer questions.
So the fence will be inside of all those plantings?
Yes.
I was looking at your scribbling and trying to figure out what that meant exactly, so.
I, I did that, yes, that's correct.
Very good.
Any other questions? I'll open this to the public. Anyone like to comment on this item? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back.
I have a question. Is this also a dimensional variant? Is this also a variance or no, because of the two frontages? Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It would have to be.
Yeah. So let's go.
Oh, sorry, the only, I, we've talked about this before, but for fences for pools, there are a lot, there is no setback at all. So they can put it on the property line. Is that correct, Andrea?
I'm sorry.
Pool fences, pool fences can be built on the property line?
They are permitted to be on the property line. You are correct.
Okay.
All right, with respect to the property located, anybody more else that have anything? Located at sixteen-eleven Trading Coast Lane, I would first move to grant the request for the dimensional variance, because the applicant has demonstrated practical difficulty. because the applicant has demonstrated practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be difficult because this is a very oddly shaped lot and it has two road frontages. And there is no injustice to the neighbors and the unique circumstances that necessitate this variance is the lot, and it's not self-created. With respect to the request for, permission request for the swim spa, correct? Oh wait, did I add the fence in that too?
Nope, you got it.
Okay, I've got the fence in there too. For the swim spa, I would move to approve that because the applicant has demonstrated compliance with forty-two dash seven point six standards. The size and use and location is compatible with adjoining properties and it's routinely found in residences in the townships. If approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, all permits must be obtained prior to construction. Ooh, do I need on the swim spa? I'm just gonna leave it open, oh, yeah. Now I think there's, I'm not gonna require additional screening.
Support. I have a motion and support, any discussion of the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate that.
You're welcome. So item fourteen has been removed, so we'll go to item fifteen. Five zero four two Chain Bridge Road.
Hi, Nick Bogath, homeowner at five zero four two Chain Bridge, seeking approval for a shed adjacent to my driveway within the sixteen-foot setback, I wanna put it closer within eight feet of the lot line because of natural foliage and trees there, take advantage of that natural screening. Spoke with all the adjacent neighbors. I'm gonna stick to my day job here and not do any more drawings after this, hopefully. But, yep, there's a picture of the driveway, it'll, it's back in the tree, foliage. And spoke with all the adjacent neighbors, everyone was on board, written approval from the adjacent neighbors. I think that about covers it.
What does the screening look like again?
Intending to put arborvitae on the front edge, that actually is a question I had. The shed would ideally, preferably open to the driveway. Would like to have arborvitae screening the front with just an opening for the door, preferably.
That was gonna be my question, I did drive by, I understand your need, you have kids, you have things.
Yes.
The issue is, we've had other applicants do the same thing, they want that shed close to their driveway so they can obviously in and out, but it has to be not viewable from public. So it makes it hard for you to have that door there when it has to be screened in the front. So do you have a plan of how we can do that? Cause obviously I want you to get your shed, and I understand why you're putting it there, it's, it has to be screened in the front.
Sure, Plan B would be rotate the shed so it kicks out to the side yard. Rather not do that given the terrain there. So if it, if there, have you seen other or approved other solutions for that? The only thing I could think of is push it back slightly and have the trees be as close as possible.
A solution that was proposed in one time was moving the shed behind their house.
Move it behind the house, that's what I was thinking.
And then, you can then still have it open basically to the side, but from public view, they can't see it. It was a gentleman with the same problem.
Yep.
And the solution that he came up with, with some suggestion, was moving his shed to basically behind his garage area. That way, it can still be accessible, but then it's screened from public view. So I don't know if you, I didn't go in your bag, I don't know if you have that ability, but I understand the want, it's just it goes against the screening.
Sure.
So.
Yeah, would it want to or be able to move it back behind the house, there's a deck and path there that would not allow for the shed. So my next solution would be to rotate it so it kicks out to the side yard and it'll be fully covered.
Fully screened?
Fully screened.
Okay.
Again, sorry, it just.
Yeah, you can't, can't see it, it has to be screened from public view.
I forgive you.
So I understand.
Any other questions?
And it's, it's encroaching eight, is it, is it encroaching into the setback?
Yeah.
By, is it eight feet or seventeen feet?
How far is the encroachment?
Eight. Eight.
Eight feet, I think this is.
Into the encroachment.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can it move closer to the corner of the house so the encroachment is not as much? So like in line right with, right with the edge of the house?
Sure, it could, some trees would have to be removed and it becomes more visible to neighbors. There's a natural tree line that I'm trying to stay within. There's trees that would have to come down if we put it closer to the corner of the house.
There's trees in the back of the house, to the left of that where the shed would be right now?
Yeah, there's two small pine, pine trees that would have to come down, I'd like to keep for. The natural screening.
If you, if you're willing to rotate it and then screen it, then I think that's. Let me open this to the public, anyone from the public would like to comment on this item? Close the public hearing and bring it back.
I would like to make a motion.
Okay.
So I believe we're gonna do two motions, one for the dimensional variance and one for the permission room. So in regards to the appeal at fifty forty-two Chain Bridge Road for the setback variance into that side yard, I move the variance to be approved as requested based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because we'll be taking down some different trees as well as your deck and other structures. And again, we're trying to continue to keep as much greenery as we can. There is no injustice to adjoining neighbors by the reason of, they were all approval of this, and again, we're gonna screen it so they can't see it. Unique circumstances of the property are the fact that we already have mature trees and landscaping in that area, and we're trying to minimize the impact to them. This is not self-created because again, some of those trees were planted prior to you being there. Now I'll go to the permission request in regards to the appeal at fifty forty-two Chain Bridge Road for the accessory structure, the shed, I move the request to be submitted, approved as submitted based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with section forty-two dash seven six standards because the use of the accessory structure is appropriate for the neighborhood. People have accessory sheds or accessory buildings for their lawn and stuff equipment. Now, again, if approved, the application for all necessary permits must be made within one year and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. Additional evergreen screenings will be required and have to be, the shed must be screened from public view and meet or exceed the height of the shed at time of planting. So however you wanna do it, it just cannot be seen, okay?
Great.
Support.
I have a motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request as modified is granted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Calling the next item, item sixteen, two four oh six Hernwood.
Good evening. My name is Reema Khad, and this is my husband Cal Turbin. We're, we're the homeowners of twenty-four oh six Hernwood Drive. We are here because we are seeking approval to put in a water feature in our, we thought it was our backyard, but it's technically considered a side yard. We discovered this when we wanted to put in a pool previously, but that was shut down by our neighbors. So we would like some sort of water feature with water fire for like a coming effect in our backyard, and that is why we're here.
Thank you.
I do also have a PDF, I don't know if it's up here, that shows the sightlines, so there is no effect on our neighbors. Were you able to pull up that presentation that I had emailed? Okay. It's this.
We can put it on here.
Okay, okay, no problem. So this is just a little presentation. Just showing the site plan. So our house is the one with the red indicator, that's the twenty-four oh six Hernwood Drive. Our backyard is behind our house, and then we have our neighbors to the west side. Their backyard is completely out of our line of sight. We sit at a cul-de-sac, we are within all of the setbacks. We are planning on putting in screening to hide the water feature. We already have planted some arbors there, but are waiting for approval to be able to complete our landscaping around it. And then, so this is something that is pretty common in our subdivision. It goes with, there are accessory structures in the side yards, pools, gazebos. These are just some aerial images of some accessory structures. So it is within, within that. Sorry.
So when you say you're gonna screen it, so I was assuming you wanna be able to see it from some?
We're gonna screen it from the neighbors.
From the neighbors.
So we have a, we have a. So if you go back to the pictures of our. So that's our, so right, if you go back one slide. So that's our family room right behind the umbrella. So we have a direct line of sight to having this water feature from inside and if we're sitting outside. And then that's our view to the rear, so we do have a pretty dense tree line behind our patio, so we wouldn't be able to put it there. And it really has no effect on our neighbors.
Any other questions from the board? I'll open this to the public, anyone like to comment on this item? Close the public hearing, bring it back.
Where on your patio is this feature located?
It's to the west. So it sits behind, it sits behind our most front, like our little bathroom there, it sits behind it. But it is considered, it is considered a side yard, so that is why we are here. Well, it's not encroaching on any setbacks, is that what you mean by dimensional?
Uh, no, it requires a variance because you have two frontages, you have it in a, is it a?
No, it's because of the location in the side yard.
It's in the side yard. I'm sorry, it's on a side lot, so that's why.
That was for our clarification, so.
Okay.
Is anybody ready for a motion?
Public hearing. Did we do public? Nope.
Uh, no, I believe I did, I'll do it again. Does anyone here like to speak on this item?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Hi, Thomas Patenga, twenty-three eighty-four Hernwood. I'm speaking mostly in a question and answer question session. Did you all receive a list of concerns or questions from the adjacent homeowner letter? These were the questions. That were posed to the group. About them and around. The concern that we had as a homeowner association, and I'm vice president of that, is that we modeled our bylaws and our governance of our community. A lot of it came from the township twenty-five, thirty years ago. And so the side yard concern is what we, we upheld throughout the community. And the resistance that we had in the beginning is not as evident on today's issue because they have come up now with a plan to put a reflecting pole in, flame, waterfall, as opposed to a swimming pool. So the resistance from the neighbors that would see it is not there as it was several years ago when this was first presented. So basically, what I can say is, if you all think this is in accordance with the bylaws or your guidance, the side yard being a prohibited site for development unless you feel it's reasonable to go forward with this project. If you say we can make exceptions to the side yard development because they have put vegetation up front obscuring the view to the public as well as the adjacent neighbor, then the resistance has lessened. So in a sense, well, the homeowner association will go along with whatever decision or rationale that the group here holds for this evening.
Thank you very much.
Clear?
We are clear. Sure, if you can just give us your name and address.
This is two three Hernwood Drive, and we are a neighbor of that property. And I am the treasurer of the association, and we, the association, approve the new plan. And we, we ask you also to make sure it's approved. Thank you so much. So the kids can enjoy, I think they had been two, three years trying to get something out there, and they were not able to, I think it's about time to get them, you know, going on their plan and have their kids enjoy it. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Does anyone else would like to speak on this item? And I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board. Would you like to respond, any, any of the comments?
So we did present this to the board and it was approved. We did take into account our neighbors' concerns from when our pool was, we did try several attempts to get a pool approved, we have young children. And our neighbors were concerned about noise and visibility. We feel like we've addressed those concerns, we've considerably reduced the scope, we've completely changed the function. We just would like some sort of water fire feature in our backyard just to complete the ambiance. And we, I guess, I'm not sure what. There are plenty of accessory structures, as I showed in my presentation, that go in the side yard in our, in our subdivision, so I don't think that this deviates. We do have a beautiful design, I believe, so I think it complies with the aesthetic of the neighborhood. It's Roman-inspired. The height of the, of the fountain is one foot seven, and then we do have a little bit more of a raised area for the fire so that we can have the water cascade from where the fire is, but the overall height is one foot seven.
Okay, thank you. All right, any questions, anybody ready to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, thank you.
In regards, I'll start with a permission request first. Regards to the appeal at twenty-four zero six Hernwood Drive for the accessory structure of a water fountain feature with a fire feature. I move that the request be approved as submitted based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate compliance with section forty-two dash seven point six standards because the use of the accessory structure, as well as the location of the accessory structure will not hinder or discourage the adjacent use of the property due to the fact that it will be screened and it is well-positioned on the lot. In terms of the dimensional variance at the same location, I also move that that variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome. Because of the way that the, the home is situated on the lot, this is probably the only place that they could put such a feature. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors because it is also well-screened. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors because it is also well-screened as well as they do have the support of neighbors. They did take the time to talk to neighbors as well as their association approved it as well. Unique circumstances of the property, again, based on how the existing home is situated on the lot, this is probably the best place for such a feature. And because of that, it is not self-created. If approved, the motion also includes applications for all necessary permits must be made within one year and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. I will say, just in case, additional evergreen plantings may be required to screen the water fountain from view as well as the fire feature from public view and must meet or exceed the height of the structure at the time of planting.
Support. So a motion in support, any discussion? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. Your request is granted. Calling the next item, item 172285 Franklin Road.
Hi, I'm Chris Karati. I'm here on behalf of EverSign Company. Our address is 1285 Wordsworth Street in Ferndale. And we're here to ask about a variance for the size of the sign, of a wall sign, to advertise a pickleball club.
So you are here and you have a monument sign, I believe, so this is a wall sign?
Yes.
And my understanding from the staff is this is not visible to any residents, just commercial?
Correct.
Just a commercial, okay. Any questions from the board? Open this to the public. Anyone like to comment on this item? Close the public hearing.
With respect to the property located at 2285 Franklin... Oops, yes, that's right. I would move to grant the request for a dimensional variance for the wall sign to exceed the permitted size because the applicant has demonstrated practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be burdensome due to the location of this building in the industrial district and the fact that the traffic goes one way down one of the roads. And it's difficult to see that small unit in the, given the size of the building. There's no injustice to any of the adjoining properties, and it's not self-created. If approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year. All permits must be obtained prior to installation.
Support.
I have a motion in support. Any discussion? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. Your request is granted.
Thank you.
Calling the next item, item 181401 Club Drive.
Good evening and thank you for your time. I'm Jeff Klett with Krieger Klett Architects. I know it's been a late night, so we'll attempt to be brief for you. I'm also here with the general manager of Forest Lake Country Club, Ms. Jackie Pally. So we do have a very brief presentation, and then we can answer any questions you have. So we are seeking three variances associated with the reconstruction of the pool area, of the patio area at the pool side of the club. So some of the goals, as you may be aware, the club has invested over $12 million into various renovations since 2019. So this is one of the, this is one of the final pieces of that puzzle to try to bring... The rest of the club's renovated, this piece is in need of it. So as you'll see in the presentation, this area has just fallen apart. Retaining walls are crumbling. The landscape is tired, past its usable life. And there's safety, safety issues, trip hazards. We're trying to make this more simple, more beautiful, more safe. So again, these are some existing conditions here, as you'll see. This is an aerial view or site plan of the current conditions. So we have the clubhouse, the top of the drawing, the pool at the bottom. And those red dash lines, that kind of represents the hazard retaining walls that exist throughout the club. So there's over, that arrow represents about 20 feet of grade difference from the top, you know, where the clubhouse is, down to the pool deck. So a significant grade change. So again, they're falling apart, they're crumbling, they're somewhat chaotic. It's confusing to get down to the pool deck. So we're looking to reconstruct that in a simple manner. So again, some images here of what's currently there. You can see those retaining walls, they're, the plantings are unappealing, they're falling apart. A few more images here, maybe. Oh, it's okay, you can skip through them. I said I'd move fast, so we'll move fast. So this is the proposed design, as you can see, it's much simpler. It's, you know, much more elegant, much simpler. Those yellow dash lines now represent the new retaining wall. So we need them. We have 20 feet of grade difference. We need something there. Again, you see the landscape beds that are in between those walls, and that's one of our variance requests. But there's a bit of a buffer between them, and we have a good mix of plantings there to help soften the walls. This is a, I'm going to call it a section or a cake slice through that wall. The pool deck is at the bottom, or the left-hand side of the image. And then the upper terrace is at the right-hand side. So that's that 20 feet of difference I mentioned. And you can see those walls highlighted in yellow. And they range from two feet in height to, at the max, about 4.75 feet in the middle. But again, they're softened up. They're softened by the landscape that we're planting in between them. And this is kind of representation more of the middle, but we do have about, you know, eight feet to 11 feet to about six feet of horizontal space in between them. So we're trying our best to maximize the space, to soften them. But it's a bit challenging because we have a vertical difference, but we also have a horizontal challenge too as we have the clubhouse and then the pool. So we're kind of, have a limited range to work within, so we have to work within that condition. So when it comes to, these are, I'm sorry, these are some images, some renderings that kind of paint the picture of what we're doing. See the new, the various, you know, landscape buffers and the beautiful walls. So it's much more elegant design. So from a variance standpoint, we need three. And they're all associated with retaining walls. So number one, retaining walls that exceed four feet in height above the lowest adjacent grade. So I already mentioned our hardship here. It has to do with that grade change. We have 20.5 feet of overall change. So we have to do something here. So we're doing our best to minimize, or to minimize the height of the wall than using landscape to soften that. Our second variance request is the horizontal separation of eight feet is required between those retaining walls. And in that cake slice that I showed you, you know, we're trying to do that. But we have that challenge horizontally when it comes to where the pool, where the clubhouse is and where the pool is. So we're kind of stuck within that position. So we did our best to maximize those. And then number three, 75% of any retaining wall must be screened with evergreen plantings. And just due to the sheer length of the walls, we think it would be a bit unattractive to just have evergreens across that span. So the idea is, we're trying to meet the spirit of the ordinance by providing plantings that provide color in the summer and help to soften that too. So we have, you know, world-class landscape architect, Chris Metz, that proposed some plantings along this that we think are beautiful and meet the spirit of the ordinance. So those are some of the plantings too. It's a mix of grasses, junipers, and sprawling roses throughout those beds. So simple, but elegant. And that's it. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Well, the reality is you're not going to get any better aesthetics for a retaining wall than at a club next to a pool. So...
Thank you.
All right, so open this to the public. Close the public hearing, bring it back.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like a comment that the planning commission did have the opportunity to listen to this request and thought very highly of it also.
Yeah, I mean, it looks, I mean, I'm very familiar with the pool area in that grade, so that's a huge improvement.
Yeah, and it was over recently, and they're definitely, things are crumbling.
Yeah.
Need to be repaired.
I mean, who knows how long that is, but that's a huge improvement, so it's a lot safer.
I would like to make a motion if anybody else is ready.
Yep.
So in regards to the appeal at 1401 Club Drive for the three variances as submitted, I move the... I'm going to state them, Andrea, is it okay when I say the three?
You can do it all together.
Perfect. I move the variance to be approved as requested based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because, again, you have a horizontal issue, so meeting the variance associated with the eight feet for each one and the pre-existing pool limits that space. So those are things that were not created, that's not self-created by you. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors because you guys are the adjoining neighbors. You guys are the ones who are going to be seeing it. Unique circumstances of this property have been demonstrated because of the fact that there's a topography changes from 20 feet down to zero. Trying to make that up with a horizontal issue. You guys are doing the best you can with the space you have. And again, this is not self-created because the pool was already self-created before your company was hired to do the landscaping. If this applicant, if this motion is approved, the application for all necessary permits must be made within one year and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. Additional evergreen screenings may be required, but we're not going to be enforcing them. Or no evergreen screenings will be additional, no requirements.
Support.
So I have a motion in support. Any discussion? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. Your request is granted.
Thank you very much. Have a good night too. Thank you.
Thank you.
So... I think we can address number two if you guys are comfortable with it, so...
I mean, we have the public hearing, and I think there's enough information in this to...
And I will say that we met with the village quite a while ago when they were looking to sell this piece of property and the understanding and the agree, and the understanding at that time that when they had that buyer, that there would be variances associated just due to the shape of the property. So I just want to share that as a kind of a backstory that the, this was something that we've talked about for quite a while to get a houseboat on the lot.
I'm willing to make a motion if everybody's okay with that.
Go ahead.
So in regards to the appeal at 155 Westwood Drive for the dimensional variance encroaching up to 17 feet in the 40-foot front yard setback, I move the variance to be approved as requested based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because this lot would basically be unbuildable. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors by the reason of it does fall within, most of the properties are 30 feet from the front yard in that area and on the street. Unique circumstances of this property have been demonstrated because it is a narrow lot, and they're trying to have it not off a maple, but off that side street to make it more appealing to the buyer. This is not self-created because, again, this is a platted sub, and the lot was already small to begin with. If this motion is approved, all applications for necessary permits must be made within one year for the new home, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction.
Support. Support.
So I have a motion in support. Any discussion? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Your request is granted.
Oh, I was looking for a person.
So do we have a motion to adjourn?
Well, one sec. So we have some new business.
Oh, we have new business, okay.
I apologize. So based on the fact that last meeting, we talked about moving our start time to 6:30. So at the board of trustees level, we approved that we are going to start our starts time at 6:30 starting as of October meetings. I would like to hear what the board thought about that. I do not, no matter what, I do not want to start any meetings until after, till 6:30 after we do the enclave development. Obviously, our special meeting on September 30th. I think that should be starting at seven o'clock. But going forward, I think 6:30 would be an appropriate time. It still gives people ample time to get here, and our meetings are running later and later.
I agree.
We discussed it before. I think everybody here was in favor of it, so I think it's a welcome change.
And we'll make sure that we send out the public notices for the October 21st meeting that we identify and make it pretty clear that it's a 6:30 start. So just to kind of give that kind of extra reminder to applicants. And we'll make note of that moving forward too, as we have conversations with those applicants to let them be aware that starting October 21st, which, another thing, another surprise, a little bit later in October. So put that, keep that in mind, it's an October 21st meeting. So actually, there's a little bit of a space between the special meeting and the 30th. In the 21st meeting, I'm not sure why it was that date. That was the adopted schedule at the beginning of the time. I'm not sure if there was a holiday or what moved it. What? Oh. There you go.
Oh, okay.
A Jewish holiday.
But to make that change, I think we have to make a motion as a board and then adopt change to amend our schedule for the rest of the year. Is that correct, Mr. Chairman?
Gee, I don't know. I mean, I guess it couldn't hurt.
Yeah.
It just seems to me, we, I mean, we don't make motion, I've never made a motion before about the start of the meeting. We, you know, if it's in the notice, that's when we come and, right? If that's what we notice it for, then that's when we start. I don't know that we, do we have...
Well, I believe that the motion by the township board would address the individuals' hours. And they're the ones that set the schedule. You recommend, but we can have a, I mean, it can't hurt.
I would like the board to adopt that because we only did ours. We didn't say that the other committees, because you guys can adopt your time and it makes sense.
No problem. Perfect. Thank you, Chris.
All right, well, I would move to change the start time of the ZBA meetings beginning in the month of October to 6:30 PM.
Support.
So I have a motion in support. Any further discussion? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I'll start you at 6:30. And then, is everyone going to be here on the 30th? I won't be.
You won't be?
You won't be, okay.
So we'll have to, we're going to get an alternate to have a full board. So we'll have to reach out to Glenda or Bob.
Okay, okay.
So we'll do that, we'll do that tomorrow.
Anything else?
And it's located somewhere else, isn't it?
I can't wait to read this stuff.
It's not located here, is it?
Andrea, is it here?
Yeah.
Okay, oh yeah.
I don't know why I read, okay.
I think if you haven't done it already, you need to go and look at the site.
Oh, yes, for sure.
I think look at the site, and I think it'd be advantageous to look at the houses behind it since those are some of the neighbors that seem to have some concerns regarding this development and the impact to them. So if you can see it or put eyes on their site, you may be able to understand some of their concerns when they come talk.
And you've got a lot of feedback.
I've had the privilege of speaking to them for the last couple of months. But I've also had the privilege of talking to both sides. So I've talked to some people that were very in favor of it and why they were in favor of it, as well as other sides. So it's been both sides. So, but again, I would implore you to take a look and see if they think there's a lot of information there.
Yep.
And then you could also visit some of their other sites that Robertson Brothers has done, which includes the one off of Lasha Road, which was approved. It may give you some insight into what they've done and just some of the products that they have put out there. So then you can at least understand if it does fit or doesn't fit what the intent of Bloomfield Township is.
Okay. So could we have a motion to adjourn now?
Some move?
Support.
Okay. All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned.